Alright, cool. We have ten people. I think we can get going. You guys hear me? Sweet. Alright, so another homework session. We're looking at utility emissions, things like fuel switching, and then a little efficiency stuff too. This homework, the math isn't hard. What's difficult is like getting all the bits of information you need to complete the homework. So you'll need to go to eGrid, for example, to get emission rates for California electricity. You'll have to look up some global warming potential values for strange things like refrigerants. And you'll need the carbon intensities for different fuels: diesel and unleaded and natural gas. And so it's really a practice of getting used to finding different data from different places. Everything that you'll need is on Canvas, including the global warming potential values. There's like a spreadsheet for that. There's eGrid, a link to eGrid on Canvas. And then there's what's the other thing? Oh, that Emission Factors spreadsheet from EPA for California, but it works for everywhere. You can also use the greenhouse gas protocol stationary combustion tool to get emission factors too. So we'll go through all that as we work through the homework. So here's the homework, assignment four, utilities at Pebble Beach. So yeah, golf courses are terrible for the environment, but they want to do something to try to reduce their emissions. And so first thing, we need data, right? So we need to calculate how much Pebble Beach is actually emitting. So we take what's called an inventory of their greenhouse gas emissions. So we look at several different things they're doing that are gonna emit greenhouse gases. And we try to account for all of them, scope one, scope two, and scope three. And then once we have that data, we can think about options to reduce CO2. And then we can calculate marginal abatement costs for those different options. So one is just building up a huge data table, an inventory. Two is calculating marginal abatement costs for two switching options. Three, after I read it, I realized I didn't quite like flesh out this paragraph. So three other qualitative recommendations for emission reductions: no reforestation, blah, 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 blah. What I meant to say here is come up with three other ideas on your own. You don't have to calculate them. But I must've got tired and just thought I was done typing this assignment. So basically, I'm gonna ignore question three. If you want to write something about it, you can. Okay, and so then as usual, here's a bunch of data. Some of it might not be relevant. This is what you've received as a consultant from Pebble Beach. And so you have to decide what you want to do with this information. So some assumptions about fuel costs, assumptions about fuel use, assumptions about their steam plant, and then the refrigerants that they use for their ACs, that sort of thing. But yeah, again, a lot of assumptions. We'll slowly work through these as well. And then part two is we look at the benefit of wearing basically Hawaiian shirts or Aloha shirts to reduce AC loads. Any short sleeve shirt would work. But this was actually an idea presented by this Pierre Ode Meyer, this co-founder of eBay. Anyhow, let's get into it then. So I'm gonna throw this to the other side. My chat logs open, so I can I can respond to that if anybody types anything there. And my speakers are on today, so that's useful too. Yeah, so I can hear you talk if you talk. Alright, so as usual, we have this cover sheet, and this one's pretty bare bones. And so we'll have to flush this out quite a bit as we work through this analysis. So getting problem one, we're conducting an entire inventory of everything. And so the approach here is to just kind of go through their list of information and decide what actually is part, should be part of the inventory. And then, yeah, fill it out from there. I'm gonna make this this portion bigger, because I don't think I really need to write too many equations today. So let's look at the the relevant data. Assumption number one, economic assumptions. Assume natural gas costs five dollars per thousand standard cubic feet. I might throw that down here, because this is kind of the cost section of the worksheet. Let me blow this up a little bit bigger, so that it carries over to YouTube decently enough. Alright, so yeah, this is fuel costs. Natural gas is five dollars USD per thousand standard cubic feet. Alright, we got that one in there. Diesel costs four dollars a gallon. Four dollars USD per gallon. Electricity is ninety-five dollars per megawatt. Power from the local utility. The Academy can also buy electricity directly from a generator in Nevada for only seventy dollars per megawatt hour. Nevada electricity is seventy USD per megawatt hour. The last bit of financial information says use an eight percent discount rate for cost calculations. Cool. Bullet number two states that the Academy operates a district steam plant to provide space and water heating in some of the buildings. Okay, so we know we have this steam plant. So that'd be a source. Let's write steam plant. We know it's used some of buildings. Okay. The Academy buys diesel fuel for the district steam plant. Diesel purchases for year 2018 were sixty thousand gallons. Okay, so this is a crummy steam plant. It's running off of diesel, not natural gas. Okay, so this is, let's insert some lines here. Still need some more data. I don't know what I need yet. I just know I need something. So this is definitely scope one, right? Smoke coming out of Pebble Beach. So scope one. One dollar. Awesome. So format cells, and it's general. Okay. And then we could say what fuel we're using. In this case, it's diesel. And what else information do we have? We know that we used sixty thousand gallons. Okay, so say amount, we can put units here, because we have different types of fuels. So we're gonna have different types of units for the fuels. Okay, so sixty thousand gallons. Okay. So we don't know what to do with that yet, but we know that we need to know something about it. We know that when we light this on fire, it's gonna make CO2, so we can calculate that out. What else do we got going on? Bullet three says the Academy buys natural gas for space and water heating in the remaining buildings. Gas purchases for the last year were seven million standard cubic feet. So this is natural gas heating for buildings, for other buildings. This is scope one still, right? Because we're lighting that gas on fire in those buildings, and so they'll emit carbon directly. This is gas. And it was seven million standard cubic feet, which is the same as seven thousand standard cubic feet. I converted it in my head from seven million SCF to seven thousand TSCF, thousand standard cubic feet, because of this price information down here. It's five dollars per thousand standard cubic feet. So I'm just trying to reduce future unit conversions where I can see them readily. Okay. The Academy buys electricity. Now I'm onto bullet four. The Academy buys electricity to run its buildings and golf-related equipment. It has a long-term contract with a coal-fired power plant in Nevada for 200 kilowatts of base load. I should've went into this on the lecture Tuesday, but power grids have something called a load curve, where it has all hours of the year on the x-axis, eight thousand seven hundred and sixty. And then it has the fraction that has what the load is. And then the hours are organized such that there's a peak load, usually on the left-hand side of the plot. I don't know if this camera's mirrored or not, so apologies for that. Left-hand side of the plot. And basically, just a few hours a year where you actually achieve peak. And then the load curve curves down, and then there's some minimum load necessary. And that's so-called base load. And that's saying that the power grid never, actually in the course of a year, goes below this value. And so that base load power is always on. It's constantly on. And so if this power plant, or if this purchase of electricity from that power plant, coal-fired power plant in Nevada, is 200 kilowatts of base load, that means it's gonna be on constantly, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. So we can calculate how much electricity is purchased from that Nevada plant. Okay, the Academy buys electricity to run its buildings and golf-related equipment. It has a long-term contract with a coal-fired power plant in Nevada for 200 kilowatts of base load, 24/7 power. Plant efficiency is forty-two percent at HLV. Transmission distribution losses are estimated at eight percent. The Academy buys the rest of its power from the local utility, whose supply and whatever can be found from the California grid. Okay, cool. So we have two sources of electricity. Let me think about how I want to calculate this for a second. Trying to remember when I set up this problem, what was, what were red herrings and what were legit data to be concerned with. Okay. Let's just type in what I know. Electricity from Nevada, coal-fired power plant, forty-four percent, forty-two percent efficient, and eight percent TND loss. Okay, let's get some more lines here. Okay, we have electricity from California grid. Okay, the local utility power purchases from the California grid were 500 megawatt hours. So electricity, the fuel, 500 megawatt hours from the local grid. Scope one? No, that electricity's made somewhere else, so this would be scope two. Okay. And this would be scope two as well, because it's made in Nevada, not over here. Alright, so you do some math for this one, for this Nevada one. This is electricity. And the amount purchased. So not the amount generated. This is what showed up at the golf course. This isn't what left the power plant. So the amount generated was 200 kilowatts. That's their base load consumption. And this is going all year long. So energy equals power times time. Power is 200 kilowatts. Time is eight thousand seven hundred and sixty hours. And I'm gonna write eight point seven six oh. Actually, I'll just be, you know, smart about this, so that when I look at this sometime later, I know what I did. 200 kilowatts times eight thousand seven hundred and sixty hours. But the other grid, the California grid, is reported in megawatt hours, so I want this in megawatt hours. And so there's one megawatt hour per 1,000 kilowatt hours. Okay. Alright, so some more fuel use. Haven't even got into like the emissions side of it, but we have to first get how much fuel we use, because remember, emissions equals fuel use multiplied by carbon intensity of that fuel. Despite the mild climate, this bullet point five, I guess. Despite the mild climate, the buildings are almost all air-conditioned. The HVAC equipment is charged with non-ozone-depleting hydrofluorocarbon 134A. The total refrigerant inventory is 1,500 pounds. The system leakage rate is estimated at 1.5% per year. Alright, so what do we got here? We have HFC-134A, and it's, I'm just writing some notes here. System leakage at 1.5%, and 1,500 pounds was purchased. Okay. Now this is the refrigerant. I don't know how to spell that word. I don't really care. That looks really bad, though. It's not a rant, I think. Whatever. And it's this HFC-134A. And this is bought, purchased, and taken to the site and fills up their HVAC equipment. And so this is definitely a scope one, because if it's leaking from that equipment, it's leaking on-site. Fuel is this HFC-134A, and it has a global warming potential value. So it's not a fuel. It's just something that's leaking with a high GWP. Why? Why are you doing this? Getting in a fight with Excel. There you go. Alright. How much gets leaked? So in Tuesday's lecture, I showed that when you're trying to calculate methane leakage from the entire US gas grid, from the gas supply lines, you take your demand, and you have to backcast what your production is, and then multiply the leakage rate versus that production. We don't have to do that here, because we're not talking about how much refrigerant was produced in some factory far, far away. We're talking about, we bought 1,500 pounds of this stuff, and some of it leaked. So the leakage calculation is much easier. It's just the rate, 0.015, that's 1.5% times 1,500 pounds. So 22.5 pounds of that stuff. Okay. So we got the refrigerant. The Academy operates a fleet of 75 electric golf carts. The carts are charged each night on a 120-volt circuit that draws 20 amps. Charging requires one hour for every five-mile round of golf, and each cart averages one round per day on the course. Oh, I got a question from the chat. Are the TND losses in efficiency already calculated in the amount of energy for the NV electricity? No, I don't think so. Well, efficiency is fine, but we have to assume some we could just assume some grid carbon intensity for coal, or we can do it properly. And I think that's what I want to do for the sake of this course, and that's something I haven't done yet when I made this assignment. So that'll be a good stretch once we get to there. But we'll have to use that combustion equation from the lecture, from lecture number two, and it's also in lecture number seven, the one that was last week, or the one that was just Tuesday. Yeah, so we'll look into that in a sec. Good question. Okay, these golf carts, they're electric golf carts. They have 120-volt circuit and draws 20 amps, and they require an hour to charge. Do we actually have to calculate this, any of this stuff? We buy electricity here, we buy electricity here, we plug in those golf carts. Do they emit anything when we plug them in? No. We already bought this electricity. So this is one of those red herring things. It's there, but we already paid for that electricity, and that electricity is being emitted somewhere, either in California or or the carbon from that electricity is being emitted in California or Nevada. So this doesn't matter. We already are accounting for the emissions required to charge the golf carts from this purchase megawatt hours over here. If you did want to know how to do this, if you wanted to calculate how much energy these golf carts were to build like a solar panel array to charge them or something, you'd have to use Ohm's law, right? Remember from your physics course freshman year? You can type in like Ohm, it's already there, Ohm's law wheel. So there's this cheesy graphic, but it's useful. So you can see here that like if you're trying to calculate any one of these things, volts, ohms, amps, or watts, you can get it from the other things. So power is volts times amps. So it'd be 120 times 20 amps, 120 volts times 20 amps. And then if you want to get to energy, you multiply power times time, so multiply that by an hour. But again, this was just a red herring, but it's important that you not memorize stuff like this, but just know that it exists. That's what scientists do, right? It's impossible to memorize all this stuff, but you just know that these tools actually exist. That's what you really should be trying to get out of those early classes, those physics and chemistry classes. Don't remember the enthalpy of something, but know what enthalpy is. Cool. Rant over. Okay, so we don't have to worry about the golf carts. Let's keep going then. The Academy owns and operates a fleet of diesel SUVs for maintenance, deliveries, etc. There are 15 such vehicles, and each is estimated to drive 18,000 miles per year, average fuel economy of 19 miles per gallon. Okay. So move this to before I burn myself. So SUVs, gallons, diesel, is going to equal 15 vehicles times 18,000 miles per year times, I'll just put per year, so my units are consistent, times, what was their mileage? Average fuel economy, 19 miles per gallon. I want miles to cancel, so I'll put that down here. 19 miles per gallon, so the gallon will go up here. Miles will cancel. I guess this is miles per year per vehicle. Vehicles will cancel. And we get gallons per year. Cool. What's up, fire? Maybe just click that check button? Uploading, please wait. Cool. Good poem. Okay. So that's the SUVs. So this will equal something. And then we have these other vehicles. The next bullet says Academy staff includes 30 workers, each of whom commute alone at their own expense to the facility from as far away as Salinas. The commuters average 50 miles per round trip for 200 trips per year, with an average gasoline fuel economy of 21 miles per gallon. So this will be cars for commute and gallons, and they use unleaded. So this is just called gasoline per year equals, there's 30 workers times 50 miles per round trip per trip per worker times 20 trips per year. And then their fuel economy is 21 miles per gallon. Let's check the units. Miles cancel. Trips cancel. Workers cancel. Left with gallons per year, gallons per year. Cool. Checks out. So this, both of these will calculate how many gallons these different vehicles will use. Okay. Put this, where did it go? Having some issues here. Come on, stick. Thank you. Alright, so let's add some more lines for our inventory. So this is SUV fleet. So this is an interesting thing about scope one, two, or three. These are driving around the golf course, so these are scope one, right? The smoke is coming out of the tailpipes on the land itself. Fuel is diesel. The amount will equal this equation over here. 15 times 18,000 divided by divided by nineteen miles per gallon. Fifteen vehicles, eighteen thousand miles per year per vehicle, nineteen miles per gallon. Okay, got some significant figure issues there, it's ridiculous. Okay, then we have the commuter fleet. Scope one, no, this isn't happening on the golf course. It's not scope two, it's an electricity, so this would be one of the rare scope three emissions for this analysis here. The diesel is uh, or it's not diesel, it's gasoline. You okay, Eloise? You guys gotta keep those sta- stairs clean. Do you need a hug? Okay. Alright, so where are we at? We got thirty workers commuting, they commute two hundred they commute fifty miles per trip, they take two hundred trips per year, and their cars get twenty-one miles per gallon. It's crazy, it's someone's the same number. Okay, so we got the cars. Let's keep on going down these bullet points. We did SUV fleet, we did commuter, commuter fleet. Next bullet. The Academy property includes six hundred acres of mature cypress forest that's protected from development or any removal, blah, 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 blah. Uh, the trees average hundred and twenty feet tall, seven feet in trunk diameter biomass is this feet. It's quester is thirty-five pounds per year, fifty percent is carbon. So you can calculate this out if you want to. You could probably go into problem number three if you want to qualitatively think about things. But uh, this is, this is caused by um a conservative easement due to like a local band of environmental activists. So this isn't something that the Academy is doing. And so I think it'd be disingenuous to count this as part of their greenhouse gas inventory, or against their greenhouse gas inventory. So that's, that's something you have to decide on your own. My moral compass says that these emissions aren't the, or lack of emissions aren't the Academy's responsibility. So they shouldn't deserve to get any credit for it. So I didn't calculate it, but if you feel otherwise, you're welcome to calculate it. Okay, final bullet says Academy property also includes a small landfill, which accepts one thousand short tons of refuse per year. The refuse is fifty percent carbon by mass, and about forty percent of that material decomposes in the first year after disposal. Uh, the rest of it just doesn't decompose, it's just buried. From the material, so it's, it's, it's in essence sequestered, right? From the material that decomposes, about half the carbon reacts to form methane, and the other half re- reacts to form CO2 as byproducts. Okay, so finally we have these landfill emissions. And this would be scope one, because it's leaking from there. Fuel is trash. And we got CO2 coming out of it, and we have methane coming out of it. And right now, we know that it starts out one thousand um, short tons trash. And so we ought to figure out how to turn that into um carbon emissions. Okay, close. Alright. So underneath this, I'm gonna say landfill, scope one, the CO2 from there. So we somehow have to get from trash to uh, these land, these uh, global warming, these greenhouse gases. Scope one, CH four. Okay, we'll work on that later. So those were all the bullet points, that's the inventory. So we have to go from this noise into CO2 equivalents. So let's get on it. Okay. So we have this unit, we need some other information to get to emission. So the standard equation is emissions equal fuel multiplied by carbon intensity of that fuel. Um, but we got all sorts of janky units, and we'll have to do some conversions and things like that to make that equation actually work out. Okay, so um, let's put emission factor, this is also known as carbon intensity. CI. And those will have its own units, I'm sure. Okay. Probably have to put some notes for different things. Okay, emission factor for diesel. We know that, you can get that from Canvas. Next to the second lecture for carbon counting, you can get EPA emission factors for fuels right there. I already had it opened. Let me pull it over to the side of the screen. And zoom in. Okay, so we're talking about diesel here. Patrol in fact, product. Unfortunately, on this thing, diesel is called distillate fuel oil number one, because it's the primary product of refineries, so it's their fuel oil number one. And um, we have this many uh BTUs per gallon, something we'll probably need later, but right now we need um kilograms CO2 per gallon. Okay. It looks like we have some other emissions too with um methane and N2O. Okay, so I'm gonna try to grab these values and work with them over back on the sheet. Okay, I'm just gonna throw them up here temporarily. And okay. Guess I have to go down this path, huh? I need more columns. So insert another column. Two more. Doesn't need to be so big. Sorry that you have to painfully watch me fight Microsoft Excel. Okay, so let's, let's emission factor, CO2. That's what that is. Emission factor, um methane. And emission factor nitrogen oxide. We have ten point one eight. Let's get the values only. No, don't do that. Format. General. Good. Ten point one eight, this one is this. And this one is this. Clean that up. Okay, so that's diesel, and the units here were um kilograms per gallon. These ones aren't kilograms, they're grams, remember? Because they're really little. I'll show that again when we get to the grams per gallon, grams per gallon, when we get the um gasoline stuff. Okay. So here we have gasoline down here. And we have diesel as well. So let's put this for the diesel, the emission factors would be the same, we're burning it either in a car or an SU, an SUV or a steam plant. So let's grab the gasoline emission factors, because we'll, we'll need those too. That's called like road gasoline or motor gasoline, I forget whether it is. Motor gasoline right here. Again, so um the CO2 is in kilograms, but methane and nitrogen is in grams. So be careful with your units here. Make sure it's in the same place, yeah. So grab those values. It's for gasoline. Come up here again. So this is eight point seven eight. Zero point three eight. And zero point eight. Zero point zero eight, excuse me. Dollars. Why is this, why does Excel love, love dollars so much? Okay. Getting there. Alright. So now we need some global warming potential values for this kind of stuff. I don't want to write here, because this, this is like my notes section, so let's put them down here. G W Ps. And um I think we're doing assessment report five and a hundred year time horizon. CO2 will just be CO2, one is one. We need methane. We need nitrogen oxide. And we need um, that funky refrigerant, right? HF C dash one, three, four, A. Okay, let's grab those um from Canvas, you would click global warming potential values, this PDF right here. I have that open, so just go there now. And I'd already checked to see if this HFC was even on there. So I got scared, because it wasn't here, but now it's down here. Hydrofluorocarbons, HFC, HFC one thirty-four A. And then we have these different, second, fourth report, fifth report. These are all hundred year time horizons, so we want the fifth report one. One thirty-four A, fifth report says thirteen hundred. Um, methane's twenty-eight, if I remember it correctly, so let's look up N2O and double check methane. Okay, so methane, twenty-eight, N2O, two sixty-five. Cool. Two sixty-five, right, yeah, good. Alright, we got our G W Ps. We got our emission factors, we got the amount of fuel used, so we can calculate now emissions metric tons CO2 equivalent. Alright, so this is gonna have a lot of factors of a thousand going around, because we have to convert from kilograms to metric tons and and grams to metric tons. So if I'm too fast and loose with the math, double check me. I just got a sta- uh Ryan says, I found the global warming potentials on the emission factor worksheet, I think they are the same numbers. Okay, cool, that's great. Oh, so so on that fact sheet, Ryan's saying that the G W Ps are somewhere on there. Uh, let's check that out. Oh, nice. Twenty-five and two ninety-eight. Um, they're a little bigger, or the methane's smaller and the nitrous is bigger. So these are from AR four. That's cool, if you use those, that's totally fine. Um, it's not gonna change the results that much. Again, the most important thing about being a consultant, if you're doing this sort of stuff for a client, is you need to be able to defend your results in the court of law in case somebody gets sued for some reason. You probably won't get sued, but somebody might get sued. And then you can just say, if you keep good books, and you can say where all your assumptions are, and you'll be fine. Cool, let's go back to the sheet. Okay. Again, cry out if I'm too fast with this, or if I screw up. So the emission factors are gonna be the emissions from the CO2, the methane, and the ni- nitrous oxide. So we have CO2, so everything is gonna be multiplied by sixty thousand gallons. And throw some parentheses in here, I don't know how many I'll need, but just go crazy with it. And then we have so fuel is sixty thousand gallons. Emission factor is ten point one eight CO2 per, kilogram CO2 per gallon, multiplied by a global warming potential value of CO2 of one, so we don't need that one in there. That number. So that's the uh, CO2 component. Now we have the methane component is zero point four two grams, but recall that CO2 was in kilograms. So I'm gonna hit that by zero point zero zero one to go from grams to kilograms. There's point zero zero one kilograms per gram. And then multiply that by the global warming potential value of this methane. So when we burn a gallon of diesel, somewhere along the line, point four two grams of methane leaks into the air. And so we need to multiply that leaked methane by the global warming potential value to get get the CO2 equivalents. So this is going to be multiplied by that global warming potential value for methane, twenty-eight. Cool. Done with the uh, methane, now moving on to the nitrogen oxide, it's this value, I don't know why I wasn't using Excel on these other ones. It's good to be clean, not type things over and over again, that's how you make mistakes, but, okay. And then this will be multiplied by the um, kilogram to gram conversion factor, multiplied by the global warming potential for methane. Alright. Okay, so we have all those, close out those parentheses. Right now, everything's in kilograms, not metric tons, because we were all kind of changing these methane and nitrous, nitrogen oxide numbers to the uh, CO2 emissions. And so everything is kilograms right now, so we need to multiply this by another zero point zero zero one, because we're going from because there's zero point zero zero one metric tons per kilogram. And so now everything should be in metric tons, CO2 equivalent. We found a typo. Oh, it, that's sixty thousand, I didn't put a star here. But Cell figured it out for me, so yes, I want to accept that correction. And we emitted six hundred and twelve dollars. Okay, we got that diesel section done. Let's do this other diesel part, and go through this much more quickly, checking the chat, making sure everybody's cool. Alright, so we have gallons multiplied by um CO2 emission factor per gallon plus methane emission factor times methane global warming potential times zero point zero zero one um, kilograms per gram plus emission factor for nitrogen oxide times global warming potential nitrogen oxide times conversion from kilograms to grams. Close out the other parentheses, multiplied by conversion from metric tons to kilograms. There we go, let's kind of look at things. Use our intuition, sixty thousand gallons made six hundred and twelve. Fourteen two blah, blah, blah is like a quarter of that, so we should be at about a quarter. One fifty is a quarter of six hundred, cool. Math checked out. Alright, the calculation for the gasoline from the commuter vehicles is very similar. Let's see here, let's put in some dollar signs for the global warming potential values, because those things are constant, they don't change. We can now be smart. We can now be smarter about Microsoft Excel and just go like this and copy the formula down. Hit this to make sure that it grabbed all the right pieces, we got. Um gallons of fuel multiplied by. Emission factors multiplied by global warming potential values, cool, looks all good. Alright. Okay, so we have the direct uh fuel consumption part done. Uh, we have not done the natural gas yet, though. Okay. Let's do that. Um, we have this natural gas plant, or we just have, we don't have a natural gas plant, we have natural gas pipes going to different buildings, and they. Light furnaces on fire to heat the buildings, or water heaters to heat water. Okay, so we consume seven thousand thousand standard cubic feet of gas, we need the emission factors for um. Gas. I think those are on that uh emission factor sheet as well. If they're not, you can use that stationary combustion tool that's also on Canvas and type things in, but it's. It's kind of a pain, let's see if it's here already. Okay, natural gas per standard cubic feet, cool, so our units are, are looking good as well. Okay, so mega BTU, mega B, B two, mega B two kilograms CO2 per standard cubic foot. Alright, so these are the values we need, um methane is grams. Nitrous oxide is grams, CO2 is kilograms. Grab those. Put them up here again, it's placeholder. And those are small numbers, um. But let's stay consistent to these other things, so that the calculations can be clean. Where are we at? Natural gas. Okay, so it's. But this is for standard cubic foot, and right now our units are in thousands cubic foot, so let's take these and multiply them by a thousand. So these are the emissions per thousand. Cubic feet, but I'll record that here to make my units consistent. Okay, so this is. I'm just gonna type it in, cause last time I did it, it changed, it's changing the formatting and doing dumb things, must be careful about my typing. This is kilograms per thousand standard cubic feet of gas. One point zero three. This is grams, I'm gonna keep my units consistent. Not try not to get too clever, or I'll lose myself. And this is zero point one grams per thousand. Standard cubic feet, okay, cool. Double check those. Yeah, I screwed this up, see? Alright. So it's this many kilograms per standard cubic feet, so it's this many kilograms per thousand, this many grams per thousand, this many grams per thousand. Alright, I like that, let me get rid of that before it scares me or something. Check the chat, see if anybody caught something stupid I did, doesn't look like it yet. Um, so this equation down here should work for this, so we're taking, even though this is all in gallons, gallon, 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 gallon. This is all a thousand standard cubic feet. These thousand standard cubic feet will cancel throughout the entire equation, the global warming potential values will be the same, and then this. Conversion from grams to kilograms will be the same, and this conversion from kilograms to metric tons will be the same. So we could take this, Ctrl C to copy, Ctrl V to paste. It made a number. It's not a crazy number, so it's probably right, let's look at it. It's taking this value, multiplying by those uh emission factors, multiplying by those global warming. We have all our conversions from kilograms to tons and grams to kilograms, looks good. Okay. We're about halfway through the, the block of time here, so I think we'll make it. Again, the, the difficulty with this homework is just keeping track of everything. The math isn't hard, it's that same damn equation, emissions equal fuel times emission factor, but um you just gotta keep track of everything. Okay, so now we have electricity. From the California grid, okay, we should be able to do this pretty quickly. So we need that E grid uh file, um. So I think I already have that opened. So remember, you can Google EPA E grid, or just Google E grid, and then you can download this Excel file, which has everything on it, talked about this in the lecture on Tuesday. Um, so we want to look at a balance authority, so this is something that's providing um electricity to Pebble Beach Golf Course. Um, I don't expect you to know this off the bat, but it's part of the um California ISO, right? So let's look for that. Um, it's alphabetical order, so here it is, California Independent System Operator, you guys probably can't read that at all. Sorry if I just gave someone a seizure with that. Okay, um. So we can type in the emission factors for CO2 per megawatt hour, nitrous oxide per megawatt hour, methane per megawatt hour, or we can just. Take advantage of the work they already did. And pull it right here. So it's um. Column Y, balance authority, annual CO2 equivalent, total output emission rate, pounds per megawatt hours, right here. So let's copy that value, four hundred and one point one six eight. Go to the cover sheet, and we have um. This is here, this is our California one, right, let me double check, electricity from California grid, so the emission factor is this. Um, but it's different, it's pounds per megawatt hour. CO2 E. Why does it always do that? Anyways. Deal with that later. Okay. So. I'm just gonna put in. Stop it. I'm just gonna put in these kind of like, guess it doesn't want me to do that. I will simply leave these cells blank, because we don't need to worry about these emission factors, cause they have been included into this value here. Uh via EPA E grid, and they do use assessment report four values, so I am being a little janky, going from four to five, and so. In case I get taken to court, I could say note these values. Use uh AR for G W Ps. Cool. But we're in pounds. Uh, we need to get a conversion factor from. Pounds to kilograms. So. I know I have, I've given you guys some conversion factors somewhere, but this is one of those things where you could just Google, man, that's big Google, um. L B two KG. One pound equals point four five four, four five four kilograms, alright. Alright, so that's there, so this will be. Equal this value, pounds. Times zero point four five four kilograms per pound, so pounds will cancel. Times zero point zero zero one. Metric tons per kilogram, kilograms cancel, and we're left with metric tons. Um, I forgot something, right, so I did the, this is all the. Emission factor part of the equation, but I forgot to include the actual fuel part of the equation, and so that's over here, the amount of fuel we used, in this case, it was five hundred megawatt hours. Alright. Looking okay. Um. Now we gotta do this Nevada part, and that's tricky. Okay, so. Cause if I recall, the homework said. We purchased that much electricity, right, that's not what got generated, what got generated is something more, cause there's. Uh. Electricity that's lost along the way. Okay, buys electricity runs building from coal-fired power plant Nevada for two hundred kilowatts, the plant efficiency is forty-two percent, transmission distribution losses are estimated to be eight percent. Okay. Do I have any more information about that coal? No. Okay, time to get to work, I guess. What do we got going on here? We have a. Power plant that's coal going into it. And has some emissions. Alright, and then that sends electricity over the power grid to the golf course. And we purchased um. How much? Oh yeah, that's, that was that calculation we already did, so remember, it's cranking at um two hundred kilowatts all year long, so that's seventeen fifty-two megawatt hours. Okay. So we used um seventeen. Fifty-two megawatt hours. Uh eight percent losses. And, okay. So this is where we need that equation from lecture uh. Two, or lecture one, might as well just bring that up rather than spend forever trying to recall it from my head. So here's this electricity generation lecture, supply side. So. Average existing coal-fired pu- unit heat rate of this, that corresponds to this efficiency. And we have. These emission factors, is it on this? Okay. So this equation is CO2 emissions are the carbon intensity of the fuel multiplied by the fuel used. The fuel used will be the fuel demanded or purchased. Divided by the efficiency of the plant, so less efficient plant will go up, and then the, then one minus line losses. So the more losses, the smaller this number gets as well, which will cause total emissions to go up, that all makes sense. And so, and then this is a conversion factor depending on what this emission factor looks like. Okay. So let me get some of that down over here. Actual fuel used. Equals um. Demand. Or fuel burned, I should say. Divided by the efficiency, which is a number we know that forty-four percent. And then one minus line losses, which was that eight percent or something. Okay, so we're starting to build this up, so now we just need the carbon intensity of the coal, I didn't specify what kind of coal it was, um, which is my bad. Uh, general, most everywhere in the United States burns Powder River Basin coal, which is sub-bucheminous, and so let's go to our emission factors. And see what we have, sub-bucheminous coal, emission factors are right here, um. We have poor per sh- kilograms CO2 per short ton, kilograms per mega BTU. That's probably what we're gonna have to use, unfortunately. Cause we can go from mega BTUs to megawatt hours. Using math, okay, so let's grab these really quick. Okay, so this is kilograms per mega BTU, grams per mega BTU, grams per mega BTU. Let's continue to flesh out this data table. I'm just gonna, before I forget, it's kilograms, grams, grams, mm. Just a little note to myself, so I don't forget what, what I'm doing here. Electricity from Nevada coal, um. Okay. This is per mega BTU. Yep, I might leave this here, just so I don't lose track of it, and this is a sub bit coal. And. The CO2. CH four. I'm doing it this way, cause we just have a couple conversions we have to get through, um. Alright, there is. You can do this the long way and just say there's ten fifty-five joules per uh. BTU, and then there's three point six million joules per kilowatt hour, and build it all the way up to megawatt hours and figure it all out, or we can just type it into Google, um. Let's say uh. MM BTU to megawatt hour. One British thermal unit equals this. Why did you do it that way? Well, let's do a million. One, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, so that's a mega BTU, that's an MM BTU, a million British thermal units equals this number, point two nine three megawatt hours. Okay. Let's get that conversion factor up here, um. Starting to get a little sloppy. That. Right here, and this is. Megawatt hours. Am I doing this the right way? Yeah. Per MM BTU. Okay, so there's that many megawatt hours in a mega BTU. So the emission factors. Per. Mega BTU are this, but the emission factors per megawatt hour will equal. Emission factor per mega BTU. Okay. I know what I'm doing, but I just wanna make sure that you guys get it, um, so we have kilograms CO2 per mega BTU. And we're trying to get it megawatt hours, and so this would be multiplied by um. One over. Zero point two nine three. Megawatt hours per MM BTU. So then we'll end up with kilograms CO2 per megawatt hour, so I have to take. These emission factors. And divide them. Cause there's only one-third megawatt hours per BTU, so these emission factors need to grow by about a factor of three X. So this emission factor divided by this conversion factor. This one divided by this. This one divided by this. Okay, so this is. CO2 per megawatt hour. And it's kilograms and methane. Methane megawatt hour. And two oh megawatt hour. Okay, so we're starting to figure it out. We got our emission factors per megawatt hour from sub-bucheminous coal. Uh, going back to this equation. This was the fuel burned. So note, the efficiency term is in here, and so now this, the emissions. Metric tons CO2E is gonna equal the emission factors. Per megawatt hour times the global warming potential by, for each one of those different species, different emission factors will have different species. So that's the emission factors, and then this will be multiplied by again, yeah, this equation. Cool, I think we, I think we're there. And there's some metric tons and kilograms and that kind of crap to deal with, but we'll get there. So let's stay consistent with our units up here. Everything is in CO2 methane, so kilograms CO2, grams methane, grams N2O, that's the same as all this stuff. It's just the, uh, fuel kinda changed. And so we're, we're in megawatt land now, space. And so the emission factor for sub-bucheminous coal. Is. It's a little janky, cause it's not necessarily, it's megawatt hour of heat, not megawatt hour of electricity, but we'll figure that out. Okay, so this equals. This cell. This is KG megawatt hour thermal. And this one equals that. Grams. And this equals that. Is this grams per megawatt hour thermal. Okay, so the total emissions. Will be. The emission factor for each one of those global warming gases multiplied by their global warming potential, multiplied by the electricity demand. Divided by the inefficiency from going from thermal to electricity, and then taking account, uh, line losses. Okay. So, um. Let's say. Nevada. F. Efficiency equals zero point four four, uh, loss was zero point zero eight. So now let's just do. Let's look at this equation. Okay, so we can take this and just put it here. So this was the emission factors for this electricity directly. But we have to take into, the power plant wasn't what just happened. This is still good. The power plant wasn't perfectly efficient. And, um. There are line losses. So, looking back at this equation, basically we've just calculated this multiplied by demand. Right, the demand, the seventeen fifty-two megawatt hour, so now we just have to divide it by this term here. So this would be divided by parentheses. Efficiency. Multiplied by parentheses, one minus line losses. Hey, I'm not done. What are you doing? You listen to me, computer, not the other way around. Okay. Close out the parentheses, it's all divided by efficiency, one minus line losses. So the number was like five hundred and sixty-five or something like that before, it should grow, cause we should grow by at least twice as much. Cause we divided by a number less than point five. Cool, so it's more than twice as much, so that looks sensible to me. That was a lot, um, you may have to like watch that part of the video again, but in the interest of time, I'm gonna keep on moving on unless people have. Uh, direct questions about that, I'm happy to talk about it. Everybody's still here. Alright. Alright, I think that was the most painful part of the whole deal. Refrigerant leaked. So purchased fifteen hundred pounds of refrigerant, one point five percent leaked, so this is the amount that leaked into the air. So we just need. So this is directly what leaked, so we just need the, um. Global warming potential for that and a conversion from pounds to kilograms, so. This will equal fuel. Multiplied by global warm potential, but this was in pounds, so multiplied by. Zero point four five four kilograms per pound. Multiplied by zero point zero zero one metric tons per kilogram. So thirteen more metric tons just from that refrigerant. Good god. What's left? Trash. Kinda agree. Okay, so what happened with this trash? The Academy property also includes a small landfill which accepts a thousand short tons of refuse each year. The refuse is about fifty percent carbon by mass, and about forty percent of this material decomposes. Uh, in the first year after disposal, after which the buried refuse stops decomposing from the material that decomposes. About half the carbon reacts to form methane, and the other half forms CO2 as byproducts. This is one of those like annoying ass, uh, like story problems, um, so. What do you do with those? Same thing you learned when you were in second grade, draw a picture. Can I just select all? So we got this big pile of trash. I think it was like a thousand short tons. And then it said fifty percent of it is carbon. And then it said forty percent. If that material decomposes, the rest gets buried. It's carbon. This stuff is like metal and plas- or metal and, you know, I don't know what else, something that's not decomposing at all. And then. Yeah, sixty percent of the carbon gets sequestered, just gets put underground, and then the rest, um. Decomposes and is emitted to the atmosphere over the course of the year, and it said that, um. Half of that turns into methane, and half of that turns into CO2. So this C, carbon, turns into methane and CO2. It's exothermic reaction, right? It's reacting with water and oxygen to make these different products. So this is what goes into the atmosphere. Question is how much? Alright, so we had. Let's do some, let's look at the methane. The carbon that goes to methane. And the carbon that goes to CO2. And this is just the carbon part, which it hasn't turned into methane yet, so that'll take additional mathematics, but I'm just going through this as. Thousand short tons. Tons times fifty percent, cause fifty percent of those short tons isn't even carbon. So we're only looking at this half of it. Times zero point four or forty percent, cause forty percent of that carbon just gets buried. And of that remaining slice, half turns to CO2, half turns to methane. So another fifty percent. Okay. And same for here. Half of that trash is not carbon, so it's not gonna decompose. Of the part that's carbon, forty percent of it decomposes, and of the part that decomposes, fifty percent of it turns into CO2. This is why you gotta draw pictures. Okay, so. Back to the spreadsheet. Okay. This kind of formula isn't gonna work very well here. But let's just at least get the. Let's be very specific about carbon that. Decombs to CO2. And this is. Carbon that decombs. To methane. Alright, so this is gonna equal. That amount of trash. Times fifty percent that turns into carbon, times forty percent that decomposes, times fifty percent that. Uh, decomposes to CO2. Okay. And this is. Tons carbon. Tons carbon.
Hey Charlie, could you just, uh, click on that cell again real quick? Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, but that's not the end of the story, because, um, so that, this is carbon that's reacting with. Chemistry from elsewhere, so it's getting mass from the atmosphere, or it's getting mass from groundwater, and then turning into methane, and then turning into, uh, CO2. So we have to think about our atomic mass units. I better not move that, that's gonna screw things up somewhere else. What's the other one? We got oxygen. Okay, these should be written on your heart and letter of fire, with letters of fire at some point in your life, so I'm not gonna explain where this even comes from. So this is grams per mole for those different things, but what we really wanna know is like these, these ratios, so, um. Ratios from when we go from carbon to. CO2 and, uh, carbon to methane. So. You have twelve grams of carbon, you react it with hydrogen, and you produce twelve plus four hydrogens is sixteen grams of, uh, methane. And I'm in the wrong place. Uh, so this, this ratio for every. Every, um, mole of methane we produce. We require twelve grams of carbon, so that mass ratio of methane to carbon is one point three three three. So what am I saying here? When you take carbon to make ma- methane, you end up with more matter. Cause you've stolen four hydrogens from somewhere in the universe. When you take carbon and make CO2, you end up with more matter, cause you've stolen, uh, two oxygens from somewhere in the universe, so in this case, we've gone from, uh. If I wanna do this very explicitly, it'd be. Two oxygen atoms. Plus. The carbon atom. Divided by the carbon atom you started with. And so, CO2 is three point six six times more heavier than carbon, and this is again something we've talked about all class long. So when this carbon. Decomposes into CO2, hundred tons of carbon, short tons decomposes into CO2, then we end up with, um. This value here. I also have to go from. Short tons to tons, do I have that somewhere yet? I don't, let's put that right here. Tons to tonnies. Okay. At this value here. Okay. Alright, so that carbon, hundred tons of carbon turned into, uh, CO2. So let's just go straight to metric tons CO2 equivalent equals, um. Hundred tons of carbon. Multiplied by this conversion to go to, um, tons per short ton. And then this is multiplied by. This ratio, cause for those hundred tons of carbon, they turned into, uh. Three point six times as much CO2. And we're already in ton space, so we can stay in this column, and we're right there. Okay, so a hundred tons of, short tons of carbon turned into three hundred and something metric tons of CO2, as it decomposed from that landfill. For this one, we're doing something a little different, cause we're going from a hundred tons of carbon to, uh, metric tons of methane. And so. Let's go here, we're not in CO2 equivalent space, we're in methane space, so this equals a hundred short tons of carbon. Multiplied by that conversion to metric tons. Multiplied by, um. The fact that each ton of carbon turns into one point three three tons of methane, so that thing there. And, okay, so. Cool, let's keep track of our units, we're in metric tons of methane. Okay? And so then to get to the equivalent emissions, we take the mass of greenhouse gas. Multiplied by its global warming potential value, twenty-eight. Enter, and that's why methane is really bad. Okay. I think we done it, so. Just gonna put a zero here so that things don't fall apart. Trash, not all the trash turned, we counted for here. Almost done with the calculation, not done with the meeting, sorry, Violet. What's up?
Dad, have you seen these, these two bunnies and a squirrel, they're Legos, and you brought my thing, my, um, treehouse.
I would check behind those, those cushions on the window seat, is that a bunny right there in the corner? What's on the corner? Corner of the room?
That's a red hairpiece.
Okay, um, good luck, I'll help you like in an hour. Check behind all those cushions, that's where Eloise always throws that stuff. Okay, so, um, total amount of. CO2 equivalent emissions from Pebble Beach Golf Course per year is this number. Come on. Equals, um, why didn't it like to do that? Okay. There we go, um. And then we can break it into scope one, two, and three, uh, by summing the components that are scope one, scope two, and scope three, and putting them there. But, um. For the sake of the marginal abatement costs, I just need this total, and for the interest of the time, I'm not gonna go through that. For the sake of the marginal abatement costs, I just need this total, and for the interest of the time, I'm not gonna go through that. But you guys see how that could be done. Alright. Okay. So we're not even close to there yet, we need to. Do financing. We have our. Let's just do um. CO2E. Okay. Think. We need a whole lot more here. Um, this, this is gonna run long, and I'll. Uh, you guys could, you're welcome to leave whenever, I'll just keep on recording, um. But, we got more work to do. So we need the financing part of this before we can even get to the, the marginal emissions, okay? Um, make sure I don't mess up things over here. Fuel costs are here, discount rates are here, okay, so if I insert lines here, it's not gonna mess up the calculations above. I think Excel's gotten better at that over the years too, so I'm just. I don't know how many lines we'll need, like maybe five or six. One, two, three, one. Two. Three, put another one just in case. Okay, so, let's call this. Financing. Okay, so we are switching from diesel to natural gas. We're burning diesel in that steam plant, we're gonna switch to natural gas. And we're gonna end the Nevada contract early, so we need to know how much money we're spending on diesel. How much money we will have to spend on natural gas. How much money we're spending on Nevada. And penalties involved, okay? So um. What do we have here? We have steam diesel. Um. Nat gas, diesel, uh. Nat gas for the steam plant, we switch it to. To uh, steam. And then we have um, electricity, Nevada, and electricity, local grid. So these are all the things we have to pay for in this marginal abatement cost, either switching from diesel to natural gas, so this would be the baseline, this is the project. Here's baseline, project. Maybe I'll just put that there to. Keep our thinking clean. Okay. So to calculate costs, we need um. Fuel used. Price per fuel. Let's do this a little bit cleaner. Fuel and those units. And then we'll do price. Those units. And um. And then this would be uh. OpEx, right? Cost per year of that fuel. Alright. So, steam plant. Use sixty thousand gallons. Natural gas, steam plant. Okay, so this'll take some more like, more conversions, so let's go back to the homework, to see what was involved with that. Switching the heating plant fuel from diesel to natural gas with a net capital cost of one million dollars. Assuming that the plant uses the same amount of fuel energy before and after the retrofit. It has a ten-year life, so what does this say? Um, so first, somehow we can pay a million dollars and now we can burn natural gas in this power plant, or in the steam plant. And the efficiencies are identical, so we just have to consider ourselves with the um. The energy density of diesel versus the energy density of natural gas, it makes some sort of conversion there. Okay, so let's look some of that up. Okay. Did I just think where? Some of this will come from. Okay, um. Probably need to use that uh. Let's do. Energy, density. Units. Okay, so let's, I recall those things being on the um, that California EPA emission factor spreadsheet, so that was in. Adobe Illustrator Emission Factors, okay, uh, we are looking at diesel and natural gas. Natural gas, we have this many. BTUs per standard cubic foot. Or one thousand twenty-six mega BTUs per thousand cubic feet. Okay. Let me grab that. Just put it right here for s- for a second, so this is gonna be. Move that decimal three places over, and we have. One thousand thirty-ish. I know there's some automatic rounding, doesn't matter, it's not gonna change the result. Uh, and this is mega BTUs. Per thousand standard cubic feet. And I'm in the wrong place. This should be natural gas. Okay. Now let's see what it is for diesel. Distillate fuel, o- oil number one. We have this many mega BTUs per gallon. One three nine. Zero point one three nine, let me double check that again, zero point one three nine. Mega BTUs. Per gallon. Okay. And BTUs. Total. So how many mega BTUs do we need over the course of a year? Um, that's simply. Volume of fuel. Multiplied by energy density of fuel, gallons will cancel, we'll get total energy. So it's volume of fuel times energy density. And we need the same amount of heat, assuming that the plant has the exact same efficiency, so M mega BTUs total, if we switch to gas, will have to be the same. So the amount of gas we need is just that same equation, but rearranged, right, so this will. Equal. Total mega bu- BTUs we need. Divided by the mega BTUs per thousand standard square feet. And, one over one over thousand standard square feet will turn into uh. Thousand standard square feet. Okay, so we need. This much. Let me think if that's kinda in the right ballpark. Doesn't that seem small? Cause the, natural gas for the other buildings was huge. Let me think about that for a sec. Look at these conversion factors again. Mega BTU per gallon. Mega BTU per. Standard square foot. Doesn't that seem small? Must be missing something somewhere. Let me just think for a sec. Do this again. Right, do, mega BTU divided by mega BTU. This number's wrong. This number's wrong. Natural gas per square feet is point zero 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 one, so per thousand would be one, not one thousand something, so this. Equals one point zero three. Eight thousand. Compared to the other buildings of seven thousand, okay, that looks way better, sorry about that. Getting there, so this is again. A painful example of why intuition is really useful. Like, there's no way if we converted the steam plant to natural gas, we'd only burn. That teeny amount of gas, and how did I know that was a teeny amount of gas? It's because I compared it to how much gas was consumed in the other buildings. And then I found the air here was in my energy density right there. Okay. So, getting there, we're still trying to figure out the operational cost of these things. We have these fuel costs down here, and so the price per. Gallon of diesel is this. USD per gal. The price. For thousand square feet of gas is right here. USD per TSCF. Okay, so then the OpEx. Simply. Total fuel used multiplied by price per fuel. Alright. Okay, so now we figured out that. That part of it. Starting to get there. Let's look at the fuel costs, the OpEx costs for these different electricity grids. We purchased seventeen fifty-two. Megawatt hours from Nevada. Uh, if we switch to the local grid, we'll still need that much power, cause we haven't done any efficiency things, so. Still need that. Megawatt hours. The price for that shitty coal electricity is seventy dollars. Price for cleaner electricity is ninety-five dollars. For megawatt hour. So then the OpEx. Baseline OpEx is fuel times price per fuel. We switch to cleaner electricity, we have to pay more money. There we go. Okay, so we've got the OpEx side of the equation. Uh, to do the net marginal abatement cost, we have to consider capital costs as well, so. Let's throw in um. Capex here. CRF values and annualized. Um, okay. So what happened when? The installation cost of that new natural gas steam plant was one million dollars. Get cross-eyed here, one E six. Okay, um. Capex for not switching the steam plant is zero. Capex for staying with Nevada electricity is zero. Capex for switching to the grid is um, well, we have to pay a penalty, right? So let's go to. The homework, where did I put that? Oh yeah, it's on Adobe. Ending the power purchase contract with the Nevada plant five years early and switching to the local power grid, grid power. Assume an exit fee of seventy-five thousand dollars, you can treat this exit fee as a capital cost and levelize over five years. Let's do that. Capital cost to switch. Is seventy-five thousand. Okay, the CRF, steam plant lasts ten years, so this would be payment. Uh, rate is zero point eight, that's that discount rate. Be good and grow over here. Rate, and it lasts ten years, that's the life of that steam plant, negative one. And. Put that down here, I don't know why that did that. This one is. A mess. Equals discount rate. Um, the exit fee we have to pay for five years, so the number of payments is five. Yes. Okay. So this had a much steeper um, cost recovery factor, and that's because we have to make those payments in only five years instead of ten years. Uh, to get the annual costs, you take um. Capex multiplied by CRF. Cool. Alright, we're getting there, um. So we have.
Hey Charlie?
Yeah.
Could you, what were just the cells for the CRF? In real quick?
Payment multiplied by, or payment, and it's, that payment function is a function of discount rate.
Oh, that was the discount.
Number of payments, and then you put that negative one to make it a positive value. It's basically saying what's the annualized cost of one dollar amortized over that many years at whatever rate. That's what that negative one means. You could go straight to the actual annualized results by typing in negative capex there, but I do it this way, so it's more clear in my own head.
And then what was the one for the? Second one down there, that is, I had it in five years, okay?
Yeah, five years, cause we exited that thing five years early.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Okay, so now, um. Have to look at emissions. Uh, the emissions from the diesel plant, we already calculated. That's the top one there, this just equals that. Um, the emissions for the Nevada plant are. Which line is that? Line number nine. That. Uh, the emissions for the new grid will be. The fuel we consume. the fuel we consume, seventeen fifty-two, multiplied by the emission factor of that California grid, which we got from E-Grid. And it was this value. Four hundred and one pounds multiplied by converting pounds to kilograms multiplied by point oh oh one kilograms per metric ton. This should be a number that's less than the Nevada emissions. Okay, yeah, so it's way less than the Nevada emissions. And that makes sense, cause we've gone from coal to something that's a blend of like solar and natural gas. Okay, so the last thing we need to figure out is the emissions from burning this natural gas. It's natural gas in the steam plant. Okay, so this is scope one, direct emissions, so it's gonna make CO2, it's gonna make nitrous oxide, and it's gonna make methane. We have to have all those things in there, so the total emissions will be the fuel used. That's this. Multiplied by the emission factor of CO2, which is right here, fifty-four point four four kilograms of CO2 per thousand standard square feet. Okay. Plus the emission factor of methane, which is this one. Multiplied by point zero zero one grams per kilogram, multiplied by the global warming potential value for methane. Lastly, we need to do this, the nitrous, so the emission factor for nitrous multiplied by zero point zero zero one kilograms per gram, multiplied by the GWP for nitrous. Close out the parentheses. Enter. That number's stupid big, because we forgot to multiply by zero point zero zero one kilograms per metric ton. And that looks like a reasonable number. Okay. So now we can do it. Numerator is dollars, and that is always project minus baseline, cause you're saying how much more do I have to pay to do this? And then the denominator is carbon, and that's always baseline minus project, cause you're trying to figure out how many emissions you save. So this will equal project minus baseline. So we're talking about switching the steam grid over, so we have to talk about CapEx. Annualized CapEx for the project plus OpEx for the project, so we burn this many dollars in natural gas. Minus annualized CapEx for baseline, that's zero. Minus annualized OpEx. Two hundred and forty thousand dollars, cause we're not burning that diesel gasoline anymore. Okay. That's the numerator. Denominator is baseline emissions minus project emissions. And we get this negative MAC. So somehow, even though we spent, we paid a million dollars for this new plant, we are saving money, and the reason why we're saving money is natural gas per, you know, mega BTU is way cheaper than diesel per mega BTU. And so we're saving like, you know, two hundred thousand dollars a year in OpEx. Okay. Let's do the Nevada contract. Equals annualized CapEx for project. That's this, annualized CapEx for project plus OpEx for project. So now we have to pay ninety-five dollars per megawatt hour. Minus annualized CapEx for baseline, that's zero, we're not doing anything. And then minus the power we're no longer purchasing from Nevada, which is this, this value here. So then yeah, so that was project minus baseline, project CapEx and fuel costs minus baseline fuel costs. Now we're looking at the emissions, and so emissions is baseline minus project, what do we, how many emissions are we saving? Here's baseline, that burn in the coal. Minus this cleaner grid. Baseline minus project. Okay, so that one costs money. And that makes sense, because we had to pay capital costs to switch, and now our fuel costs have gone up to ninety-five dollars from seventy-five dollars per megawatt hour. So here's the marginal abatement cost for those two, two projects. Okay. It's noon. I don't think I have it in me to go to the aloha shirt section. We can spend time on that next week if, if necessary, but it should be much more straightforward than the other one. The only tricky part is that cost to saved energy, and that's when you take you say, I have to pay all this much money to save energy, and so you take that cost to save energy, and then you divide it by the number of kilowatt hours you save. And so that tells you basically the price per kilowatt hour of, of that. And hopefully that price per kilowatt hour is less than what you pay at the power, pay the power company, and then you save energy by doing that, that switch. Alright. Cool. Questions? Before I sign off. Most people have already checked out, it kinda looks like, there's only four people left.
Hey Charlie?
Yeah.
I just missed the emissions equation for the project electricity local grid.
Right.
I just discovered.
Yeah, I did that pretty fast and loose. So what did I say? I said, well, how much fuel did we use? That's that C twenty-five. Or seventeen hundred fifty-two megawatt hours. And then I multiplied it by G eight. Why aren't these things being? Okay, so this is that funny value that I got from the E-Grid big Excel sheet for all balancing authorities. And the CAL ISO Balancing Authority has a reported emissions of four hundred, average emissions of four hundred and one pounds per megawatt hour, CO2 equivalent. So the methane and nitrous has already been accounted for, and that was in that big E-Grid spreadsheet. So I have total fuel used multiplied by the emission factor. But that's in pounds per megawatt hour, so then I multiplied by a conversion. This R eight term refers to this cell, which converts pounds to kilograms, point four five four kilograms per pound. And then finally, I convert from kilograms to metric tons with that point zero zero, point zero zero one.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Yep. Alright. This is all just getting you guys, it's like an exercise, right? Getting you used to working with all these crazy units and keeping good books. Your actual like projects for the class wouldn't need to be this detailed. Alright, I'm outta here, unless anybody yells at me in the next like five seconds.
Thanks, have a good weekend.
Yeah, likewise.